Good afternoon, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Rich Mace. I'm the mayor for the city of the Dallas. And before we get to our main speaker here today, I'd like to ask everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Unfortunately, we don't have a flag, but we do have this, and I'm going to hold it up. So if everyone please rise, put your hand over your heart and and join me at the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, without end invisible with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce a United States Senator Jeff Merkley. Jeff is the son of a millwright. He was born in the rural southern Oregon timber town of Myrtle Creek, and his family moved with the timber economy to Roseburg and then to East Monoma County. Jeff began his involvement in policy as an intern for Oregon Senator Mark Hatfield. Before being elected to the Oregon House in nineteen ninety-eight, he worked on national security issues for the Secretary of Defense and led housing and education nonprofits, including a chapter of Habitat for Humanity in two thousand seven. It's about, I'll just have to yell out, okay? In two thousand seven, Jeff became the Speaker of the Oregon House, and two years later, he was sworn into the same United States Senate seat once held by Hatfield. In the Senate, he has emphasized building the four foundations for the success of working families: good health care, quality education, decent affordable housing, and good paying jobs. As Chair of the Interior Appropriations Subcommittee in the Senate, Jeff has been working hard to boost funding for the payment and lieu of taxes and wildfire funding. Senator Merkley helped pass the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which will bring significant funding to the region for roads, bridges, broadband, and other critical infrastructure. Jeff also supported the Inflation Reduction Act, which will help accelerate the deployment of renewable energy projects and lower prescription drug costs for the seniors on Medicare. Jeff also championed a number of community initiated projects in Wasco County over the past two years. Jeff holds an open town hall in every Oregon county every year. This is his second town hall this year and his five hundred sixth overall town hall. We're happy to have him. Please welcome United States Senator Jeff Merkley.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and it's a pleasure to be back in person after two years of Zoom Town Halls. And I'm really pleased to see so many people come out today. Welcome. Good, good to have you. And at the start of each town hall, I like to kick it off by recognizing a group that's doing important work in the, in the county. And today we're going to recognize the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council, and Kenny LaPointe is here. Come on up, Kenny. Welcome. Put your hand over your heart and, and join me at the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, without end invisible with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce a United States Senator Jeff Merkley. Jeff is the son of a millwright. He was born in the rural southern Oregon Timber Town of Myrtle Creek, and his family moved with the timber economy to Roseburg and then to East Monoma County. Jeff began his involvement in policy as an intern for Oregon Senator Mark Hatfield. Before being elected to the Oregon House in nineteen ninety-eight, he worked on national security issues for the Secretary of Defense and led housing and education nonprofits, including a chapter of Habitat for Humanity in two thousand seven. It's about, I'll just have to yell out, okay? In two thousand seven, Jeff became the Speaker of the Oregon House, and two years later, he was sworn into the same United States Senate seat once held by Hatfield. In the Senate, he has emphasized building the four foundations for the success of working families: good health care, quality education, decent affordable housing, and good paying jobs. As Chair of the Interior Appropriations Subcommittee in the Senate, Jeff has been working hard to boost funding for the payment and lieu of taxes and wildfire funding. Senator Merkley helped pass the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which will bring significant funding to the region for roads, bridges, broadband, and other critical infrastructure. Jeff also supported the Inflation Reduction Act, which will help accelerate the deployment of renewable energy projects and lower prescription drug costs for the seniors on Medicare. Jeff also championed a number of community initiated projects in Wasco County over the past two years. Jeff holds an open town hall in every Oregon county every year. This is his second town hall this year and his five hundred sixth overall town hall. We're happy to have him. Please welcome, United States Senator Jeff Merkley. Thank you so much, Mayor, and it's a pleasure to be back in person after two years of Zoom Town Halls. And I'm really pleased to see so many people come out today. Welcome. Good, good to have you. And at the start of each town hall, I like to kick it off by recognizing a group that's doing important work in the, in the county. And today we're going to recognize the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council, and Kenny LaPointe is here. Come on up, Kenny. Welcome. So you're all probably familiar with some of the many different types of services that they provide, including utility assistance, weatherization, veteran services, and housing assistance and shelter. And last year, they provided thirteen thousand shelter nights for folks in the three counties of Good River, Wasco, and Sherman. And as this is really, yeah. And one of the things that they're working on now, maybe you can say a couple of words about it, is developing a navigation center. So there is a place where, where do I go to figure out I need help on X, Y, and Z? How do I do that without kind of being stranded trying to figure it out with when you may not even have a phone to work with to do that? So, welcome. Good to have you. And maybe you can say a word or two about your work.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much, Senator Merkley. We really appreciate that you're here today. Your staff on the ground has been phenomenal to work with, so much that I stole one of them to come work for me. And I, I just want to give credit to my management team and my staff that's here today because our agency wouldn't be where we're at today if it weren't for them and their leadership and commitment to the community. If they could stand up, that would be good. We, we find a place that make it happen on the ground every day. When it comes to thirteen thousand bed nights, cool number, that's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that folks are putting in time and commitment to the community. And I'll just say that our work to provide shelter doesn't end at shelter. We support folks in getting into permanent housing, and that is our goal. And since the beginning of this year, or the beginning of twenty twenty-two, we were able to place over seventy individuals from our shelter into permanent housing here in the Dallas. So, and we only have thirty-four beds at our shelter site here. So we've, we've done a lot of work to get people into permanent housing. We have the Navigation Senator, Navigation Center project, which Senator Merkley referenced. We're very excited to break ground on that project in March. It's going to be on West Seventh Street. It will be a multi-agency service center along with a non-congregate shelter as well. And we'll, we will be co-housing around five different agencies in one location. So we can wrap services around folks who come in. They don't have to travel all around rural Oregon trying to access services. We were also fortunate enough to be included in CDS spending request, and we are partnering with the Community College Construction Trades Program, who will be building tiny homes to be placed on that project. So it has sort of a workforce development aspect to it, as well as housing and homeless services. So we are super happy to be in your community, to lead on homeless services. We're grateful to be a part of it, and I just want to emphasize that our, our mission is to build a better future for our entire community, and that involves all of you. So thank you so much, Senator. Really appreciate it.
This is a way of recommending, just in a way of saying, well done, and congratulating you on this work and thanking you for it. This is a flag for you all to use in appropriate fashion that has been flown over the US Capitol. So a lot, a lot has unfolded the last couple of years, and of course, we're, you know, we're kind of coming out of that COVID tunnel. Thank, thank goodness. We have a lot of issues to deal with. We certainly have a massive, massive housing challenge. Well, we have a, a college affordability challenge and, and also a lot of help for our children who were set back by the, by the, the two years of COVID in, in terms of whatever point they were at grade school or, or high school. We are in the middle of a transition from fossil fuels to renewable energy, and a lot have unfolded in that way. In terms of the, the national legislation that continues to reverberate and have an impact, we had the, the ARC funding, American Recovery Act funding. We then, and the goal was to prevent kind of a complete collapse of the economy at the key pivot point in the middle of COVID. We have the Inflation Reduction Act, which, and then we have the infrastructure bill. And, and then we just passed the, what's referred to as the omnibus funding bill for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which we're already in the, the, the middle of. So we had a continuing resolution, and we have this bill. The, my focus has really been on the fundamentals of health care, housing, education, and good paying jobs. The other piece on the jobs front is, one, we have a huge shortage of workers. It's means our unemployment rate is very low. It also means that our businesses are in desperate need of, of folks. We have a huge shortage in health care. And my wife is a nurse, and I hear about the, you know, the burnout and the challenges in that world all the time. And our health care providers, our hospitals are, are really having a challenge, having enough folks in the health care world. And we need to increase, find a way to increase the, the training programs that can get a lot more folks into those fields, because there are a whole lot of folks coming out of high school who want to be in health care services. They have good grade averages, but the, the programs are full. And so that that pathway needs to be, be broadened. The main point of the town halls is to hear from you all, so I'm just going to stop. We're going to use a system, I think we did the tickets, right? The mayor, the mayor is going to pull four or five ticket numbers out and, and we'll call out the numbers so that everybody has an equal chance to be heard. If someone's speaking that you completely disagree with, please be very respectful to their point of view, let them have their say, and have everyone else be respectful when it's your turn. I completely, I keep hearing from my fellow senators, they kind of are surprised at Senator, why didn't I do these town halls? Because across the country, people have abandoned town halls, because we have a lot of deep divisions about perspectives, divisions that are magnified by cable television and social media. It's cool that here in Oregon, we have sustained this tradition, and it's a really important one in a republic. So with that, Mayor, why don't, why don't you just set four or five of them on here? I'll just call them in order, and if nobody responds, I'll go to the next one. And let's see, I think, and Dan, help me a little bit. Do we have, do we do just the last two numbers or the last three numbers on these?
Two, the last three.
Last three. Okay. So, and if you could just give your name and maybe what part of the county you come from as you jump in. And eight, one, two. And I'll read the next one while you're looking to see if that's your number. Eight, two, six. Eight, one, two, or eight, two, six. Just stand up if you've got it. Yeah. And then maybe tell me what number you have, and we'll return.
I have eight, two, six. Okay. With the Republicans taking over the House and the end of the January sixth committee, is there any chance that the Senate's going to pick up the investigation and go a little further and, and maybe investigate some of the members of Congress that were involved in planning and developing the January sixth insurrection?
I don't think there's any plan for the Senate to, to, to do that. I haven't heard any discussion of that plan. Actually, there was a lot of compliments to the House for having taken it where they, they got to. I think we really want to, the, the sense right now is really embursing ourselves in the substantive challenges in those worlds of health care and housing and education and, and jobs and rather than doing investigations. The House has said they're going to spend their time doing a lot of investigations. I don't think that's the plan. That's not the plan in the Senate. If it's a suggestion you're making, I'll, I'll, let me think about, about, about whether specifically that would be useful, but I think there's an appetite to try to just work on the real problems facing us and, and go forward at this point. January sixth was a and many things around it, you know, it was something I never imagined. I was getting ready to walk across outside, and my, my team said they received a notice from the Sergeant-at-Arms that the crowd was so large that maybe it wouldn't be a good idea to walk outside to go from the office building to the Capitol. And I initially dismissed that, and then when I heard that not just a large and dense crowd, but an angry crowd, I thought, okay, well, it'd be hard to move through them and then get past police barriers. So I, I stayed underground. I could never have imagined in a million years that this Capitol would be stormed. It's to be in the Senate chamber and suddenly have the, the Vice President whistled away and suddenly see Capitol Police appear trying to lock the doors. And it was, you know, it's, it's symbolic of the divisions we have to overcome in this country and go forward. Anyway, thank you. I'll try not to talk too long on any one topic, because we can get to a lot more. And so did we have that, anyone with that first card? Yes, ma'am. And then I'll read the next one here is eight, one, eight.
Hi, I'm Marilyn, pharmacist in the Dallas. And I'm really glad that the insulin prices have been negotiated down for Medicare and Medicaid covers it. But what can we do with the private sector?
Yeah, thank you, Marilyn. So we are ripped off on drug prices. We pay sometimes fifty percent more, twice as much, and sometimes ten times as much as people in other countries. And it comes down to this. Of every other developed country, they negotiate with the companies over the price. We do not. We're banned by law from doing that. It's a law we've been trying to change, but we're banned from doing it. The Veterans Administration does negotiate, and on average, their drugs are fifty percent less. So we're paying at least twice as much as we, as, as we should be. I introduced a, a bill that essentially said you can't charge America more than the average of what you charge with the other developed countries, and it listed a group in Europe, Canada, Australia, and Japan. And interestingly enough, for a very, very brief period of time, President Trump came out with that plan. And I called up his team and said, we've got a bill. But, but a week later, he stepped back from it, and it, it says something about the, the power of the pharmaceutical industry that we're in this situ- situation. And so we did get a small start, as you noted, but that thirty-five dollars per month, which is great, it isn't because we negotiated the price, it's because the federal government's picking up the difference and lowering the price. So we're still paying out of a second pocket what we're saving in the first pocket. We did have in there a process that a small group of drugs are going to be negotiated for the first time. But it's, it takes several years for that plan to unfold. I hope we can build on that. And as you point out, we need fair prices, not just for people on Medicare. We need fair prices for everyone throughout our entire society. You know, on some issues, I like to take a little feedback from the group, and I'll just ask here, but like, if you think we should negotiate the crisis of, of, of drugs, like every other developed country, maybe raise your hand if you think that that's a bad idea. That's pretty much the feeling I get across, and, and, and yet we can't get it done. There are some two, I think it's two or more lobbyists for the drug industry for every member of Congress. And one of the things we have to do is get the dark money out of campaigns, out of our political system as a way of getting that. Okay, and that next number we had was eight, one, eight. Does anybody have that? Yes, and then that one after that is eight, zero, three.
Let me put it in the river, but I, I'm not going to get a chance to ask you the question later. So I just wanted to know what you're doing to protect Oregon housing from corporate investors.
Oh, so nice. Well, so I kept hearing from folks that they're going out and they're shopping for a house, and they're being told that, that there are folks representing hedge funds that are there with all cash offers. And so I've introduced the bill, and now that we're in a new Congress, I'll be reintroducing it. And I just introduced the first one a couple of months ago. And it basically says hedge funds cannot be in the business of, of residential houses. That houses should be homes for families, not a profit center for Wall Street. So they own a huge amount, and we've been trying to get the numbers. We've just got some numbers today that last year in Oregon, hedge funds bought twenty percent of the houses up for sale. In some markets, they're buying, for example, Atlanta and Phoenix, almost, well, averaging around forty percent of the houses. And it just doesn't drive up the cost for homeownership. It drives up the rents as well. So the entire housing market is getting out of reach of ordinary families. And I, I think about when my parents bought a home, I live on the very east edge. It wasn't used to be outside the city. Now it's been incorporated into Portland, the east edge of Portland. And when my folks bought a house there, my dad, a union mechanic, earned seven thousand. The house was fourteen thousand. Now, if a union mechanic is earning eighty thousand, a house is not a hundred and sixty. It's not, it's now four hundred thousand. So it's a five to one ratio instead of a two to one ratio. So the, the dream of homeownership is getting out of reach. And in addition, rents are getting out of, out of, out of reach. So there is no reason we should be competing against the richest people in America. And quite frankly, homeownership was the biggest source of middle-class wealth. And the hedge funds have said, we want that money instead of the middle class in America. So, so I'm proposing, let's kick the hedge funds out of the housing market. And let's see, which was next? Oh, three, eight, oh, three?
Yes.
Yes, and on deck? Eight, three, eight, and eight, two, eight.
Yes, I have a question. I'm a service-connected disabled veteran. And after about, we're trying to get veterans assistance, non-assistance medical coverage for my wife. And we've been told no numerous times, and we've married sixteen years. So to step forward, we went and applied again. This was in May. And they still have not gotten our medical for my wife. And we're spending about three fifty a month, and this has gone on for a considerable amount of time. Are there blockage? It seems like there's a blockage almost in the system, and it's been really frustrating for us. Excuse me for being nervous. Yeah, some family members know other veterans have gotten benefits for their spouse. And so we're kind of curious, we're be done with that.
So I have a constituent services group. And one of them works basically exclusively on military benefit-related issues. And so if you give your information to Allison, who's standing next to you, we'll connect you with them. They learn the details of these programs and then lobby to get the, the program properly implemented. And, you know, I have no way of knowing the details of when you qualify, whether your wife qualifies or not, but we find out and help. And when we call them up, it, it, it kind of motivates them if the file has been sitting on a side desk somewhere to take action on it.
Okay, you've actually been heard that it's not our department. So we contacted Champ V A. It's been a challenge. She's oh, yeah.
This last night, it was, they got her age wrong.
Yeah, they got my age wrong.
They guessed at her age.
Great. Well, I'll try to help out.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, you're welcome. So eight, three, eight, and eight, two, eight? I don't have a question. Eight, three, eight. Eight, eight, three, eight. Thank you. Did you, did you want to, did you have anything? You don't have a question? Okay. Then the other one, eight, two, eight? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Roger Nichols with White One and Two Radio. It's good to see you again, Senator. I have two quick questions. I'll try to make it real quick. One is, when I was in college fifty years ago, I could work enough in a summer to earn my tuition. Is anything going to be done federally about helping college tuition? I know we have programs out there, but they don't cover a lot. That's one. And two is, this is the magic open question. If you could pass one bill this session, what would it be?
It'd be an omnibus. It has all the bills I want crowded in together. You know, Roger, the example you use is exactly an example I often use. When I was getting out of high school, if you worked for summer at minimum wage, you could pay the tuition at Oregon's public universities. Might not have paid your housing or transportation or whatever, but it could pay your tuition. And nothing close to that, that now. And we see other nations saying, you know what? The future depends upon our fiscal infrastructure and our human infrastructure. And so, for example, in Germany, it's free to, to go to college. And one of the things that so what we're doing is we're saying that right now, it is such a difficult pathway that you end up with all this debt, right? If you're a normal family. And then that debt is like, well, is it really, really makes sense to incur all of that debt? Well, I escaped from that debt. Will that be a millstone around my neck? And so you have folks abandoning their dreams because of that obstacle. So one piece, and we've taken a stride towards this here in Oregon, is very low-cost community college. So we have the program in Oregon where it's kind of fifty dollars a credit if you come out of high school and you go into community college. That concept, we need to spread across America. That was in our Build Back Better bill, but it, it, it hit the cutting room floor to get fifty votes, unfortunately. And we need to ask ourselves in terms of our national spending. Now, I spent years working in national security, and I worked for the Pentagon for three years. I worked for the Secretary of Defense under President Reagan. And I saw the amount of money wasted in those programs. And the question in my mind is, do we have a strategy to recognize that while the last century may have been belonging to the country with the biggest military, the next century is going to belong to the country with the best educated citizens? And so we, we need to tackle this challenge so that at a minimum, students can go through debt-free. I'm not saying their parents shouldn't contribute anything if they're able to do so, but at least the student shouldn't be burdened with that coming out. It shouldn't have, have to abandon their dreams. So that's, that's the vision I'm, I'm aiming for. It's very low-cost community college and debt-free four-year degrees. Thank you. Yeah. Anybody have, have kids who are worried about debt levels? A few, yeah. That one, on deck, eight, one, five, and then eight, two, one, following up. Going once, going twice. Next number. Eight, two, seven, eight, two, one, and eight, two, seven?
Two, one.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Two-parter. The first one is, I don't think you've mentioned mental health, and that sort of interwines with all many other problems, such as housing, homeless people. So if you'd like to talk to that, and I have a general question, which might help all of us that are Democrats, how do you keep your spirits up? So if you'd like to talk to that, and I have a general question, which might help all of us that are Democrats, how do you keep your spirits up? How do you keep from being burned out?
Uh so um. Mental health, absolutely. It comes up in every context. Uh I was very struck when I was before COVID, I was over in La Pine, Oregon, and I was meeting with the uh school counselors for La Pine. And they were saying that children coming into first grade were acting out far more than they had seen in the past. And I said, well, what's going on in the community? Did a manufacturing facility shut down, meth epidemic? Uh what's going on? And they said, well, we have economic issues, yes, but they said what's really going on that's new. Is amount of time kids are spending on electronics as small children. And that they're getting less socialization. And more alienation. And and that that is being very disruptive in in the school setting. And then COVID hit, and we had so many children who for two years. You can't really like like attend class on a, sitting in front of a computer screen all day. I mean, I don't. Find me a third grader who can do that, and it's would have to be a miracle. Right? So we have additional challenges on top of that. So that's just school setting, but we also have. Broad additional challenges throughout our population that we uh have to have a lot more. Mental health services uh for. And so our public universities are looking at greatly expanding the supply chain. Of people trained to be counselors. That's really an important piece of it. Uh and um. We need, so we need help in the schools and we need help outside the schools. So I'm I'm glad you I'm glad you raised it. Absolutely. It does. Very much tie into housing homeless uh issues as well. You know, back back when I was in uh nineteen eighties, when I was working in Washington DC. Uh I I met uh my wife, who was working at a homeless shelter. And I spent a lot of time down at the shelter. And what I saw was that folks who were there for economic reasons. Tended to be there for days, weeks, not too long. Because they still had relationships that they could go live with a relative or a friend. Uh and uh or get back into the job rhythm. But folks struggling with addiction and struggling with mental health, very different, very different uh story. So. Big challenge. I'm sorry.
How do you keep your spirits up?
Oh, well. They're not always up. You know, I just feel like um. At the time I met my wife, I was rebuilding a house. I was a, you know, a handyman carpenter. I was gutting a townhouse and rebuilding it. And um I don't think she would have married me if she knew I was going to go into public policy and collective office. Um the uh. I feel like. It's so. Um crazy that. I've been given an opportunity to try to work for policies that will help. Thousands or millions of people across this country. And I just wake up thinking, how can we advance those policies? Go make this world work a little better for a whole lot of people. And so I don't, I don't have the, it's it's not acceptable to spend time. Um being down, I just have a, I have a job to go and keep working on. Not that it has been some difficult years, for sure. Uh eight one five and eight two seven? Either one, okay, we'll keep going. And eight three zero? And on deck. We have eight one four.
I was curious what's happening with the lone, uh lone, lone fine housing. For the uh Native Americans.
In in terms of the housing along the Columbia River? So uh a few years ago. Uh I went and visited. A number of sites uh that are traditional hunting and fishing sites. Uh and also engaged in a dialogue with the the tribes about housing. Uh that essentially was supposed to replace villages, uh native villages, when the dams were built. And that didn't happen. There was one rebuilding that occurred, which is Salado village that you'll see in the in the in the gorge. Uh but that's it. And so uh we have now made one more step forward. In which we have authority to look for more than one site, because in the last round. We had a challenge, we got one site authorized, but which side of the river would it go on? And it's really hard to find a site that's suitable. Uh and also the attention of which side of the river. So now we have authority to look for a site on both sides of the river. And and the challenge on, when I say suitability, what I mean is that um every place that has infrastructure. Is already developed. And so finding a place where you can actually build out uh sewage, road access, et cetera. Has been challenging. Uh the uh the core, the Army Corps started, I think, with a list of some eighty-five properties. Came down to a handful, consulted with the tribes, the tribes said those don't work. And so. Now that we have authority for both sides of the river, we're giving it another go. Okay, who's who's next? Yes.
Uh, my name's McGee. I am a farmer here in the Dells. Um my question is. Um well, it's more of an issue is that it seems recently, maybe within five, six years or so. Um it seems like there's been a various stop and approach when it comes to. Um hate crimes and bigotry, um especially related to law enforcement. Um. You know, being a man of color, I've been all over several times in the Dells for my license plate, like, you know. Um even though my father-in-law, who was a, or a sheriff in thirty years, never pulled a single person over for that. Um so I'm kind of used to having the the law enforcement. Um watch what I, I I would say. Um so it's really quite disheartening seeing uh insurrectionists. You know, uh bigots kind of seeing the hate crimes uh happen and very little being done about it. Um very commonly, no charges pressed, charges dropped, or very little in terms of any kind of punishment. Um. So that that's just my concern. Just want to see what what your thoughts on it were.
Yeah, well, thank you for uh, thank you for raising it. Um. We've had a public kind of interaction that has become a lot coarser, I think, over the last few years. I attribute some of that to the internet, where the anonymity of the internet got people in the habit of being pretty insulting and and maybe that carries over into other. Other settings. I was very struck when I was first an intern for Senator Hatfield. So I'm I'm nineteen years old. I'm so excited that I get to be an intern in Washington DC and I get there and I'm assigned. To uh get up early and come in and open all the mail. And scan each letter, and it was all, of course, snail mail. Uh and uh and sort it into four stacks for the four different correspondents. And I start opening it, and you know, the sort of, I had to glance and see what the issues were in the letters. And I was shocked at the amount of hate that was in that mail. Because I never heard it on the streets of Oregon. And boy, y- you can imagine every single attack in the world against different religions, against different ethnicities, against. Different races. And um so I know that this is like. Exists. But it's become more public expression. Uh over these last few years. And I I think we need to kind of all work towards a much more gracious society. But I don't know what the magic is to make that that happen. One is for our public elected leaders. To exhibit that that graciousness, to set that example from the president's office on on down through everyone. You've mentioned the question of whether the hate crime laws are being enforced. That's a more state-by-state jurisdiction by jurisdiction issue. Uh that I don't have any particular uh insight. On, or I guess it's not federal policy, but. Uh I'm just glad you're raising it and I'm I'm glad that everyone has come out to a town hall. With folks in this room who have very different opinions about what we should do, but isn't. This, and maybe this is a little example of us bridging those differences in a positive way rather than in a. Uh a rant on on social media or an insult to somebody in our community. Thank you. Eight one four? And eight three seven? Which number do you have?
Eight three seven.
Thank you.
Kathleen and I are from South Wasco County.
Um Senator Merkley, I recently learned something and I just would like some clarification, and this is not party affiliated. It's just from an American perspective. As a bill moves through uh committee and comes to the floor for a vote. Is there ample time for the senators to debate, to discuss, to change? Before they take, make their vote? And. If it's not adequate time and you place your, cast your vote. How is that representative, representing your constituents?
Yeah, I'm so glad you raised this, because um the Senate. And the House have been pretty dysfunctional, but the Senate even more so than the House. And let me, let me explain. The the Senate that I first saw. That summer that I worked for Hatfield, I was assigned to the Tax Reform Act in nineteen seventy-six. That act. Uh there was no television on the floor of the Senate. There was, of course, no fax machines. There was, it was like Stone Age, right? Uh Senator Hatfield would have a member of the team be on the on the floor, actually in the staff gallery, watching the debate. And then I'd run down and meet him and brief him on what the debate was before he went on to vote on the amendment. That bill had a hundred and twenty-five simple majority votes in a row. So the culture. The culture was any, you could put up an amendment, it'd be debated forty-five minutes, half an hour, whatever, then they voted on the next one. Now what we have uh is a Senate that's completely locked up by the supermajority requirement to close debate. What it takes to close debate on getting a bill to the floor. Is sixty votes. So the minority party. Can block that from happening. You get it on the floor, every amendment, closing debate, it takes sixty votes to close debate. And the result is, it's like walking, legislating there and now is like walking through. A field, a swamp, you know, mud up halfway up your calf, and every step is hard. And the result is. That. We're, we we don't get the work done. You know, there's twelve appropriation bills. It used to be all twelve would be put on the floor, debated and and passed individually. So you wouldn't have this massive bill. You would have individual bills. Uh and uh now, it's like that obstruction. Uh has completely infected the body, reinforced really by the. Division at the grassroots between the two two parties. And so what I've been trying to do to remedy that, so the result is one massive bill when you're journeying. Or when you're on the verge of the government shutting down, like this omnibus bill. That bill. Was over four thousand pages. There is no way people knew everything was in there. I didn't know everything was in there. I read summaries, I read examples. But but even sometimes people changing, dropping a word, you read that bill and it drops a word out of phrase. You don't know what effect that had. Like, like you have to have committee staff write up summaries. So nobody knew. The details of all that was in that bill. And what happens, instead of it being debated on the floor. This, like I saw in way back in nineteen seventy-six. Instead, it's negotiated between the four corners. So you end up with the majority leader, minority leader of the Senate, Speaker of the House. And the the top minority member in the in the House. And those four sit. And write, you know, decide what's in and out of the bill, decide the issues in and out of the bill. This is terrible way to legislate. It's not transparent. It doesn't take advantage of the talents of one hundred senators, because those senators don't have the ability to actually weigh in with amendments along the way. Uh and it's why I'm doing everything I can to reform the filibuster. Now, I'm not proposing getting rid of the sixty votes. Because that is not going to happen. But what I am proposing is a has to be a talking filibuster. Right now, it is a no-show, no-effort sixty votes. Which means that those who are kind of saying they want more debate, don't show up for debate. There's no debate. You see nothing happening. On the on the floor, except people giving speeches for the for the television camera. A talking filibuster would mean that that obstruction would have to be public. The public could weigh in. Are they heroes or they bums? And uh it takes a great effort. To sustain that conversation, so it incentivizes negotiation and wrapping up the debate and getting the job done. So the talking filibuster is my proposal uh to take us out of this very dysfunctional state we're in uh right now. Yeah, you're welcome. And uh any, have you all heard of the filibuster? And you picture kind of like a long speech or something? Doesn't work like that. It's a sixty-vote requirement since nineteen seventy-five. No speeches required, no amendments required, nothing like what you think of in Mr. Smith Goes to Washington. So. That would be the change. Do we have the next on the list? Uh eight fourteen, last call? And then uh.
Eight fourteen?
Eight fourteen, yes. Eight fourteen? No, uh eight two two? Or eight two zero, eight two zero?
Choose eight two zero?
Eight two zero. And eight two two.
Okay. Um I'd like your thoughts, I'm Allison, I live in the Dells. I'd like your thoughts. On the Copyright Claims Court. That is in the office of the Librarian of Congress, outside of the judicial branch. Functioning in a way that seems to be uh. Tending toward privileging copyright trolls. And chilling opportunities for fair use.
Okay, uh I'm going to actually ask you to fill me in on your thinking, because I'm not familiar with this issue. And so you get a little chance to, and I can follow up and get more details about it.
All right.
Maybe share a word or two about, I mean, I understand what copyrights are, of course. Uh but but I'm not familiar with the problem of copyright claims.
Well, the, we certainly see it in the the world of the internet where. Uh individuals who are seeking to uh quote or use. Uh pieces of other people's intellectual property in criticism or other creative acts. Are landed with a claim of infringement. On copyright that get, then can go to this so-called Copyright Claims Court. Which tends, has the potential to um. Chill creative work. Building on intellectual property in new and creative ways. Copyright was intended to promote cultural activity rather than crush it. And the way it seems to be working is to privilege. Um powerful corporate interests in intellectual property rather than creative activity. Through creative reuse.
Okay, so uh that's my uh chapter one lesson. Thank you very much for for providing it. Uh I I thought for a moment you were going to mention a a different issue that I've I've heard about. Uh where uh you may have um a newspaper. And uh then a, you you may have a site that starts taking articles from all these different sources, putting them up. And basically taking those copyrighted articles from all these places and putting them on a a place where. They don't have the right to put them and the original folks who invested in writing them get no. Credit or their organization gets no credit.
Right, well, that's another piece.
Another piece of this issue.
Situation. I'm I'm more concerned about, say, literary critics. Being able to quote. Rather than protecting uh hypocrisy.
And literary critics, obviously, you should be able to quote. Um and so I want to learn more and uh thank you. Uh yes, eight twenty-two is next. Before you speak, I just wanted to mention, we have a House member and a Senator uh with us. And Dan Vonnam, who was a House member and now as of last Monday is a Senator. Do you want to stand and be recognized? Jeff Peltich, House member, is here as well, who is now, who wants to see that Dan, anyway, you have to help him very much. And if either of you want to chip in on any of these issues, just wave your hand and I'll be glad to put a microphone here in, in your hands. It's great to have you here. And thank you for representing this part of the state in, in Salem. And I must say that the time I spent at the Salem Legislature was so rewarding. I was in the minority for eight years, majority for two years, and it didn't matter if I was in the minority or majority. It was just a productive dialogue with folks. And, and I know that legislation has become a little more divided than fourteen years ago, but anyway, it's a very cool place to, to address real issues people are facing. And we're proud to have you representing us. And we have now eight oh five, oh yeah.
Eight two two.
On deck, eight oh five.
Wait patiently. I'm Debbie Ferrer and I'm from the Dallas. I want to thank you for your service to our state and to our country, Senator. My question is about climate and I want to thank you also for being a, a real advocate for acting on climate issues. So my question is that I know that the, some of the recent legislation you've passed has provided some incentives for electric vehicles and charging stations and things like that. But the reality here on the ground is that there is not available. And so what do you see and what can you do to help improve the availability of these for consumers who want to, you know, start converting to electric vehicles?
Yeah, and by these you mean the charging stations?
No, I mean electric vehicles. Yeah, they're just so hard to find again. And there are people who are on long, long waiting lists, two-year-long waiting lists who want to buy them and they're just not available. So what can be done or what is being done to improve the availability?
Yeah, yeah, point, point taken. It is a massively different world. When we bought our first electric, there were basically three models on the market. Now there's like thirty. But there, the demand has risen much faster than the supply. The supply is trailing along behind. And like some companies that didn't have one at all, like Subaru, I hear is now introducing their, their first electric, et cetera. The Yes, yes. What you know, and you're, you're, your point taken. I have looked at it as positive that the demand is high enough, there is a short supply. Like people have started to, to use them enough to say, oh my goodness, they, they work. And just to give you my experience with that, Mary and I had a Bolt, B O L T. And, and then my, my son had a, an accident and the airbags went off. So that's all takes the total of car. So we had a leaf, a used leaf that we, we bought. And, but it didn't have enough mileage for Mary's work. She got stranded a couple of times because it only had like sixty miles. And so we traded it in for a Bolt with a B. And the Bolt was a Chevy Bolt. We bought it before the demand increased. So, so they were actually trying, they had hugely discounted them because there wasn't much interest in them. And so we were lucky. But it gets, it, it has two hundred and forty mile range. And the cool thing is that it costs three cents a mile to operate it, three cents. Because it'll go four miles on a kilowatt hour. A kilowatt hour costs twelve cents when you're charging at home. And so you save enormous amounts and you're not burning gasoline, which is a huge factor. And, and you mentioned climate. We have to change the way we're, we're headed. The, the concentration of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, which back when the pre-industrial was kind of two sixty-five, two eighty, is now way over four hundred. And that's kind of the, okay, well, what does that matter? It's the fire season here. It's the fires themselves. It is the smoke from those fires. It is the loss of snowpack in the Cascades. It is the groundwater in rural Oregon dropping because it's not recharging as fast as it was. It's water supply in general. For our cities, yes, but for our farmers and our ranchers. It's the acidification of the Pacific Ocean because the carbon dioxide becomes carbonic acid. That's affecting, we've had this huge change in the sea life just under the waters off the coast because the kelp forests are disappearing because of a chain of events that starts with a disease among the starfish. And the starfish delete the, the sea urchins and the sea urchins exploded in numbers and they're eating up this kelp forest that provide all kinds of habitat. Like these things we don't even see. Anyway, we see it everywhere you go in this state and it's affecting the foundations of our rural economy, our farming, our ranching, our fishing, our forestry. So that's kind of why I, this is all changed so much just in the time I've been in, in elected life. Think about how it would change in another ten years, twenty years. So that's, we've got to drive that transition. In terms of how do we accelerate the availability, well, so what we did is we provided tax credits to buy cars, but that means even a surge in demand side and the supply side's catching up. Yes, the numbers being sold each year are going up, but they are behind. So I don't, I don't have a great answer for you. A few years ago, people were saying the problem wasn't that, that, it was available in charging stations. And the charging station is improving very, very quickly. We, we've driven our Bolt all over Oregon. And we have discovered that there was places that really needed charging stations, but they're adding them. And, and if anybody wants to know where the best stations are, I'll be happy to fill you. But there's like four different apps where you can call up and see every charging station. And that really helps as well. So point, point taken, and I hope the supply accelerates because the initial sticker price is way too high. And that's, that's a big, big challenge. And that's that five-minute warning? Okay, so I do want to note that if there's any students here who would really like to ask a question, feel free to jump the line, any high school or, or college students. If you wave your hand, we'll just invite you to, to make a point or ask a question. Okay, then I think we're going to eight oh five. And then eight twenty-nine. Yes, one here and one in back, okay? Right up here.
Hi, Margie, and I'm from the Dallas and my dad was a millwright too. I want to know if the idea of policing that they use in Eugene where they have the conflict people go out was like a physician's assistant that's been really cost-effective. Is that catching on anywhere?
Yes.
It's a good program. I write everybody about it.
Yes, so this, the idea is, and, and I think there's been a lot of dialogue with our public safety officials about this, that they're saying, well, we just got a report of a mental health issue, but we're not trained in mental health. Isn't there like folks we can send who are trained in mental health? So, so Eugene said, let's train, let's have trained people available to respond in those settings. Other cities are starting to examine this program. I think it's getting a lot of attention nationally. So the short answer is, is yes. Yeah. And I did want to mention, when we conclude today, you know, in the, in previous years, I've been able to, to stay and, and meet with people individually afterwards. On the schedule we're on today, I'm going to have to go right out the door when our time expires. But I'm going to turn it over for some local announcements to our mayor. So I just wanted to warn you all. I'll apologize in advance. If you have a question that you, or you know, you wanted to hand me a piece of paper or anything like that, some of my staff will still be here and you can pass it to them and I can follow back up. And then I think we have the last question in the, in the back.
Carolyn from the Dallas. I just wanted a quick update on the River Democracy Act, please.
Yes, the River Democracy Act is Senator Wyden's bill. And he laid out round one several years ago. Here's a draft. And he said, can everybody kind of take a look at this and give me feedback? And he got a lot of feedback. It essentially has different levels, three different types of protection for different segments. He had people nominate segments of, of rivers. I think he just reissued it at the end of last year. And, but that means it expired on January third when we came in. So therefore I assume he'll be putting together a new version to, to put out. That's the, that's the update I have. And with that, we have two more minutes. And do we have one more? Eight forty-three.
My name is John and from the Dallas. I just wrote this, Senator. I believe you are one of the, seem to be more one of the old type Democrats. How the party was during JFK and MLK, and I believe that most of the older people here are that type of Democrat. And it seems like that recently it's strayed away from their words. Can you assure us that there are still some, the old Democrats and their feelings and the way that they want, you know, believed in JFK and MLK? Because it seems like it's the opposite now, that they're moving away from those.
Boy, I wouldn't want to characterize the, the party and, and really, our town halls are bipartisan and I'm not trying to focus on any one, one party. But I will happy to say that many of the principles JFK and MLK fought for certainly the, the principles that, that I believe in and, and care about. And I think as we wrestle with kind of what is the challenges ahead, we have economic challenges. You know, I was a big fan of kind of the fundamentals that Roosevelt, Franklin Roosevelt pursued coming out of the Great Depression. We got the amortizing home mortgage and we got a whole series of other things to help get families on their feet. And we had this huge expansion of, that continued on way, for the three decades after, after World War Two. In fact, this is kind of one of the things that I'm most troubled about is, so I come out of high school in seventy-four. So basically three decades after World War Two, and I see this phenomenal leap in my parents' lives. My mother's, mother had her first three children taken away from her because in the years actually preceding the Great Depression, there were no jobs in the barn in Kansas and she was hand washing people's laundry and living in a boxcar and lost her children. And my father's family also very, very modest means. And they all got by by growing a lot of vegetables and doing a lot of canning and things of this nature. And suddenly, you know, a generation later, they, they have children graduating from high school, me, and you know, they, they can own a house and a car and, and a garage and we could go on vacations camping. And we had vacations because labor laws have been passed that created minimum wage and overtime and so forth. And I thought, think about how this is going to change in the next three decades. Well, we're here three decades later and the middle class has not thrived over these three decades. It is being compressed and affected and it comes back. Maybe it's a good note for me to end on. Why am I so focused on healthcare, housing, education and a good paying job? Because those are the things that put families on their, on their feet. And it's frustrating that over three decades, we have slid backwards rather than, than moving forward. I want to thank you all for coming out and being part of this conversation. It's tremendous to have you here. A special welcome to our delegation. They will soon be in Salem working hard. If you have bill ideas, you know how to find them. And our republic doesn't work without public engagement. And this is one of the healthiest forms of engagement. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Senator, for coming to our town hall here. And we're looking forward to having you come for our next one. My only local announcement is to invite everyone to our, the Chamber of Commerce in the Dallas is having their annual outstanding citizens award banquet. It is going to be held right here in this very room, Thursday, January nineteenth. Again, to honor citizens of the Dallas or in Wasco County.